All right, this is the April work session for the Social and Political Board of Education on April the 18th, 2020. And it's called the Order. First item on our agenda is the prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that have trespassed against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Dr. Brewer, are there any changes to our agenda?
No, ma'am.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I would.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the approval, next is the approval of the minutes from both our regular meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have executive session. Do I have a motion to exit our regular session and enter into executive session?
So would.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The board will now enter into executive session. All right, do I have a motion to exit the executive session and re-enter our regular session?
So would.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The board is back into regular session. I'll now turn it over to Superintendent Brewer.
At this point, I'd like to call our CFO, Nicole Crofts, to share with us our update about the budget that we're looking at for the next full year.
All right. Carry the papers.
Would you like me to change pages? So we'll start with the general fund, that is our focus topic, since it's our main operating fund. The first slide has some of the state budget updates. So these are all of the fiscal budget updates that were included in the Governor's State 2025 budget. Salary increase for certified staff of 2,500, increase in pupil transportation allotment of, it's about 45,000 per school. School security grant of 45,000 per school. And just so you know, the pupil transportation allotment before was about 170,000. And so they've given you more operations, basically, to increase that allotment per, for your operating expenses. Increase in TRS match from 19.98 to 20.78. TRS is the state retirement system, so that is a portion of salaries that we are required to contribute. Increase in certified health insurance employer premium, that has increased from 15.80 per month to 17.60 per month. And the classified insurance premium will change January 1st. If you remember, it changed from 9.45 to 15.80, and now it's, I mean, 11.95, and now it's going to be 15.80. And the thought there is it'll be 17.60 like certified, probably next year. It looks like they're going to keep increasing it until they get to that point. So that is probably one of the largest hits to our budget over the last, last year and this year. So next, we'll start with revenue. This is just an overall overview of our revenue. And on the next few slides, I have kind of a detail of each of those. So local taxes, obviously, is mostly our tax digest. So on the next, and I'm sorry, Carrie, I'll kind of have to flip back and forth. Keep going, right here. Yeah, our net MNO digest. So Tommy Knight, our, with Walton County, has an MNO expected increase of about 6.4%. It's, that's a, you know, generous increase, not great, like we've seen over the last three years. Most of which, most companies did not add equipment to their inventory over this year, mostly because of supply chain issues as well as cost cutting. So this isn't obviously as good as the 8, 9, 12% we've seen over the last couple of years, but we'll take it. But this budget will currently keep our billage rate where it is, at 17.846. Over the next month, we're still looking at expenses that come in, and we're still working on some of our salary schedules. The state, because of a lot of the budget changes, haven't given us the final numbers. So it could move some of these up and down. So, you know, this budget does include the same millage rate and out of rollback. But we do, as we move forward, we may be able to. We just kind of are waiting to see the flush out of all the salary schedules and the final numbers from the state. So I'll keep you updated with that over the next month.
So Carrie, if you're going to the, oh, sorry, thank you.
So this is a look at our digest over the last five years. So obviously, this is estimated, so he just gives us kind of a total digest estimate. This is our millage rate over the last three years. So we were high there for several years, and that's what we're trying to do, is start coming down a little bit. So this is the total amount of taxes levied. So value of a mill. So if you're back, probably, what, five years ago, we were at low 160s? So our digest has grown over the last few years, almost adding 100,000 to the value of a mill, which is good. So the digest has grown. The thing is, our digest have grown so much over the last few years, I don't anticipate they're going to grow at that rate again. You know, you've got your tax bills in the mill, you've seen your appraisals go up over the last few years. So I think they're kind of even and out now. So this is probably where we'll be over the next few years, is what Tommy's expecting. Unless there's growth within the city, of course. But I don't have any of that knowledge, and we don't anticipate any of that right now. That would help us in the next couple of years. So that's primarily what local taxes is, is added lump tax. And then another small piece of that is T A D T, which is the title added lump tax. That's another one, once the state changed to when you purchase your car, you can pay the tax. It kind of fluctuates. For a couple of years, we saw a huge increase, because that's where most people were choosing to go there. And now it's kind of even and off. So we were seeing 50, 60,000 increase a year, and now we're kind of, it's just tinkering around about the same, maybe a 3% increase. So I was pretty conservative with that increase. So most of this is going to be that lump tax increase. Other local, that is our intergovernmental agreements with Walton Newton, and then tuition that families pay. So we've predicted a lot of 3% increase, so everyone's digest is coming up. If you've noticed, our Newton County count, as well as our Walton County's own five count, it has been trending down. But because our tax digests are going up, we're earning more per student. So that's why we still anticipate a lot of 3% increase. The biggest part of our budget, obviously, is our state local QBE. That's the quality basic education funding that comes from the state. So, and that's where most of our changes will be. For FY '25, we're estimated at 18.1 million. This is up 1.8 million. Now, most of this is the $2,500 increase the governor has given, as well as the increase to state health for certified. For every certified staff, they do reimburse us for state health for those employees. Equalization increase, 716,000. Equalization is a state grant that aims to equalize digests across the state. So they take everyone's digest in the state, and they aim to kind of equalize how much every district gets per student. So you get an equalization grant if your student, if your digest doesn't, doesn't bring in as much as other districts do, kind of to equalize. Like their Green County, they don't get any. Their tax digest is so high. Gwinnett gets a large type of equalization because of their student population. So it's just kind of there to equalize digest across the state.
But it's hard for us to anticipate, and from one year to the next, it can range really widely. And you can literally go from $2 million one year to zero dollars.
Yeah, so that's, that's the one that's kind of scary. It all depends on tax digest across the state. And it's based off data that's old, two years old. So it's just one of those shot in the darks. But if you look at ours here, we've gone from 1.1 million, and, you know, we got, it went up and then came back down, and then it just jumped. So it's, it's all based on tax digest throughout the state and how yours ranks with everyone. They literally put everyone on a, and rank you 1 to 170. And the bottom 20 districts get the equalization. So, but it is a large part of our QBE and very thankful for that. But this is a kind of look back over our QBE over the last few years. You get an initial QBE, and that's based off three prior FTE counts, which is your full time equivalent student. They do a midterm adjustment, and this is what, when the governor comes in in January, and they do midterm adjustments, that's when they raise the state health. That's when our EDA adjusts for your FTE if you have any growth. If you lose enrollment, they don't deduct for you. They will let you continue at that rate. This is where their adjustments are. We had a slight increase from our initial to midterm of about 116,000. It wasn't anything large. But overall, this year, we're up 1.8 million. And most of it is in the normal earnings, which, like I said, is mainly attributable to state health and the $2,500 increase reimbursement. This is pupil transportation, where we predict they're going to go from 170 to 350. This is a number, once again, that's not final, but they feel pretty comfortable with it. They're still trying to figure out how to calculate that accurately across the state. That's our equalization. And nursing, they provide a flat $1,45,000 for nurses in your district if you're under an FTE count of 9,000. So for the foreseeable future, we will get one FTE for nursing. And then our last part is state sources. So these are miscellaneous state grants. Most of these are going to be CTAE grants we get from year to year. It is going down in the current year. We received a couple that we won't be getting next year. So in FY '24, we received a 200,000 school security grant, and the $1,000 employee bonus that every employee got, and that amounted to 207,000. And state bus bonds. Normally, they give us one state bus each year. Last year, they didn't catch up, and we got four. So all of that revenue was received in FY '24 that we won't have in FY '25, so that's why you see this deduction. So overall, we predict about a 1.6 increase in our revenue next year. Are there any questions so far? Feel free to ask, but that's just a quick recap.
No, no doubt. $2,500, if you're certified, get any.
We'll talk about that in just a minute. It's not required, no. The 2,500 is a requirement from the state. But I'll tell you, we are.
For certified, yeah.
Yes, certified, sorry. So a quick look at expenditures, and that's when we'll talk about this. So as you know, salaries and benefits represent 85% of our budget. So our budget is based off of salaries. So that's where we have to focus most of our efforts. So an overall increase of about 1.5 million or 7.3% in this area. And most of that is salary increases and the increase in state health. The non-classified, the, I'm sorry, the non-certified state health, we pay that as a district in full. There's no portion of that that the state helps for. So only they help with the certified employees. The state certified salary increase of 2,500. So the $2,500 increase, when we put it on our state salary schedule, for our first-year teacher, that will be about a 5.3% increase over the prior year. And then if you look overall, across all levels in our state salary schedule, it's about a 4.32% as you move up. Obviously, 2,500, as you move up, the higher you make, the less percentage that is. But overall, it's still a 4.32%. And if you remember, last year, we gave a straight 5% to everyone, including certified. So last year really bumped everyone up. I think this is the last increase, you know, the governor wanted 10,000, and he's there, but still has two years in office, you know, we can't predict that. It's getting very expensive, so I would be shocked if he continues, though increases at this rate. Very well deserved, and, you know, should be where they are. It is expensive. So we have about 167 certified employees. So with this state health increase, that's about 417,000 cost for that. On the classified salary schedule, this is where it gets a little, what we're planning, it gets a little different. So we're not proposing a straight percentage increase across the board. If you remember, when Dr. Hook was starting, about, you know, the first year or two, we designed a salary schedule. And on those salary schedules, we started placing people based on job descriptions and grades. So over the last three years, a lot of our positions with the raises, we feel are fairly compensated. If you look, we compare them to Walton, we compare them to Morgan Newton. Where we have issues are at the bottom of the pay scale. And so those are the ones we want to focus on this year. The paraprofessionals, the school nutrition, the bus drivers. And when we talk with other CFOs in our RESA in our area, that's what they're doing as well. We're really trying to bump up these bottom positions. So what we're proposing is currently our minimum full-time hourly rate. So currently, a paraprofessional starts at $11.68 an hour. That is honestly below any other district around us. So we are pretty low. So our proposal is to increase them up to 13.25 an hour. And that would put us in line with what Walton is trying to do with Newton, Morgan, those others, Barrow. And so if you look there, the paraprofessional salary will be from 18.6, and the beginning will go up to 20.1. School nutrition, they're currently at a 17,023. Their beginning salary will go up to 19,005. And then bus drivers, they're at 13.5, and they'll go up to 14. And once again, that sounds low, but remember, they're four-hour employees, so they're more of part-time. But their hourly rate will go up as well. So that's where we really want to focus our efforts. Everyone will get a raise, because our grade structures are set that every year you get at least a 1.5% increase. So everyone will get a raise of at least 1.5. But if you look at some of these bottoms, they could be as high as 13%. But we feel to be competitive and to retract or retain these employees at these levels in their important positions, that we need to kind of fix this. And that's what a lot of districts are doing. So that is our plan on declassified. New positions, all of the new positions are earned through increased FTE, and they all happen at our primary elementary school. So none of these positions are non-earned positions. So QBE tells you how many positions you earn, and these are always in that realm. The main ones, we're adding a new kindergarten, and we're hoping to add a new pre-K. The state has asked us to add a pre-K, and so we agreed and applied, but we haven't heard back. So that may be another addition. And right from the start, does reimburse us for those salaries. Not all of it. They have increased their reimbursement rate, but most of them.
Do we know where you're at?
No, we're really shocked, because they reached out to us and told us that they wanted us.
They have been kind of tasked by the governor to increase pre-K enrollments. So they are trying to expand programs throughout the state. So if they see districts that look like, and we always have a waiting list. If they see districts, they'll often, you know, they're reaching out now to see if we can add. So we should hear back soon.
I think they were waiting for the end of the legislative session as well, because they're a big part of all the literacy work.
That was two, two weeks ago, roughly, yeah.
And there are so many changes the state is scrambling. Even our district office giving us these QBE numbers has been behind, because there were so many, many changes going on. So the TRS match, which I explained a little earlier, that cost will be about 123,000 per district. And then the state health, which we talked about. Of our certified staff, about 140 on average elect state health, so that's an increase of 302,000. And that, like I said, is most of that comes through our QBE. And then for classified, we have about 63 on average, and that increase is about 145,000 cost to the district. And then lastly, operational, that is the smallest portion of our budget, like I said, because our salary and budget, our salary and benefits are so high, and that's average. I mean, that's normal across every other district. There are some districts where it's 9%, so. But we've kept that increase to about 50% or 312,000 operationally. We've done a really good job over the last three years, getting everything into the hands of everyone that needs them. And we have developed a pretty good system of cycling through things, so it's not all happening in one year, so we can evenly distribute the expenses. Improvement of instruction, you'll see when we get to the next slide, that's our biggest increase. But what we've done, federal funding is complicated, and we're able to consolidate some of that funding. And once we consolidate, it used to be very specific to professional learning. And now we've got, given the option, we're adjusting and putting all of our professional learning into the general fund and moving out salaries and expenses to our federal programs. And it helps our general fund in the end if we do that. So that's why you'll see the biggest increase here with improvement of instruction of 164,000. This is kind of misleading, because in this current year number, you have all of those $1,000 bonuses from the state. So it's, it's very kind of wonky, but like I said, it's about a 300,000 overall increase. This is salary and benefits, so the 1.7 million increase, what we talked about. But in operations, we have a decrease, and that's because of those state grants we got for the buses and the security improvements. So we won't have that next year, so that's why. But in actuality, it's going up overall 300,000, if you take out those state grants.
I know that's quick. Yes. Can you go back up to the slide where you were talking about the new positions that were created for the next year? So where it says three new teachers for first, third, and fourth grade, that's one teacher for each one of those grades?
Yes.
And that's just based off of how many kids we have in those grade levels?
Right.
And the earnings? So we work with the, the schools to make sure that they understand how to maximize the way that we're coding our students. For a long time around here, we didn't do that very well. And so that's one of the reasons that we've been able to increase our teaching staff, is because we're doing the better job of essentially building the state for the services we're providing anyway. And so at the elementary, at the primary school and at the elementary school, because they've done a great job with that, we have the opportunity to grow in these classes. So note that it's not just first, third, and fourth. It's also a kindergarten class. So we're real pleased that we're going to be able to get those class sizes down a little bit.
Thank you.
The funding for those positions comes a year after we actually have the kids in the seats.
Yeah, QBE is a year behind, so you kind of have to play kent up after your first year. Are there any other questions? I know that was a lot of information about the general fund, but this would be a balanced budget. As I said, it's, it's tight, you know, not as exact as I would like. But I think we're all breaking into that now. We know all have our funds, everyone's property tax digest and things of now. So that is one reason we chose to be strategic with the salary increases, putting them where they need to be. And I think everyone will understand. I mean, last year, the 5% was a very nice raise. It got people, you know, we feel like they're very well, you know, aligned to our neighboring districts. You know, we may be a little under in some areas, but that's normal. But we can be strategic in especially those operational categories. All right, next we have our special revenue. So these are our grants. We don't know grant amounts until September of the next year, so this budget, you always budget what you get in the prior year. So this will change in the midterm, but for now, this is what we, the only thing I took out is ARC, because ARC is gone. That's the CARES funding we got. We won't receive that anymore. So this is typically the, the grants that we receive each year. And as you can see, pre-K is this one here, and we get funding for that. School nutrition. Okay, so you have our FY '24 budget, and as I told you all lately, I'll be doing a midterm budget adjustment at our next meeting. So this is kind of that midterm adjustment. And we sat down and really looked at the numbers to see where we think we might end up. And so on here, we will have a slight loss this year. We have fund balance, as you can see, over the last couple of years, we've been able to grow. So we have a fund balance here of 200,000. That will cover that. Next year, once again, we have a larger loss of about 200,000. But I want you to know, over the next month, this probably will change. I'm working with the school nutrition, and we're looking at as many ways as we can to cut these costs. If you look at operations at 4%, the food costs are high, but they're leveling off. I don't think they're going to go down. I think they're going to probably stay the same, but I think they'll go up a little bit. So we think, you know, that's a pretty conservative number. We've noticed where they haven't continued to increase in price like they've worked for quite some time. So we feel like that's leveling off a bit. Our salaries and benefits is where, you know, most of our expenses are. And so that's one area we're really sitting down to figure out, the best staffing plan, and if we can make any adjustments. You know, having a middle high school with that many students, that is the area where we need the most staff that we have. You know, traditionally, in a school that size, you can run in and have two lines going, but we have three, because we have so many students coming in at the same time, because we're functioning a middle and high school. A high school can split in, out periods, but we're not able to do that. So we're not, we don't know that we can cut this number a lot next year in salary and benefits. But when the new school opens, and we're going to lose, one grade moves out, we think we can adjust this sum to be able to compensate some of this salary and benefits. We've recently had two employees who are not going to come back next year. And so this is an adjustment we think we're going to be able to work around, not having them back. So as I said, over the next month, I'm still working with her to really redefine this. Obviously, we want to get this number down. Our revenue, and on this slide, if you look at the yellow number, that was COVID. That was free meals. So that was pretty much, everybody was eating. And if you look at this green line, this is where we are now. So our participation has incredible, I mean, it has greatly increased. We're providing the meals that kids want, which is the good news. So we really feel like revenue, we've done what we can. We've increased participation. We've, the expansion of à la carte items has been an amazing key chip. That, and I have kids, I know that they're young. And you know, even if we go to CEP next year with free meals, we're hoping that frees up some of that money students give for, parents give for actual lunches, and it could even increase some of these supplemental sales even more. So, you know, but revenue, we feel like, you know, we've got second chance breakfast going, those kinds of things. But there are some state grants we're going to actively look for next year. And they do help with equipment and food costs. So some of that, like I said, we're getting a list, and we're hoping to be able to, you know, increase state sources some, some grants. And, you know, we're trying our best with salaries and benefits. You know, the increasing their salaries, which is needed, and the cost of health insurance is really making that one a hard one. But I don't predict that the general fund, you know, right now, it looks like the general fund would have to provide about 20,000, but our goal is to get that to zero. But we'll keep you updated. But this is one of those areas, and it's happening across all districts. This is becoming a really important balance.
When we get into new school, on open operations, will that save us money? Care to keep it up?
Yeah. So what, when we open the new school, even though we're going to have a lot of students, you can run, because the way they can come into the lunchroom by class, you can run two lines, even in that large of a school. Right now, we're opening, you know, we have two lunchrooms, two lines going, so yes, we'll be able to consolidate some staff. You know, that's why we're not going to rehire this two that just left. We don't want to let anyone go, obviously. So we're hoping for nutrition and normal, you know, everyday occurrences, that that won't happen.
But the building and maintenance, that should help us out some too. We getting rid of.
Oh, building aids, I'm sorry.
I did specify, I did.
It's going to give us an opportunity to do some of the repairs or things that need to be done in the middle and high school, because we've really neglected that facility.
Yes, you're, yeah, definitely. The, the cost of upkeep at the primary and elementary have been, has been quite high, so that would definitely help.
So the goal would be to consolidate the staff that's choosing to leave, but it wouldn't mean the district's desire to necessarily eliminate staff?
No.
That's what I'm hearing. Okay.
Yeah, and so that's why, that's why we started now, trying to look at that. And we have a couple subs we've been able to hire. So with them giving us that flexibility, if someone is out, we're able to use them and utilize them at any school. So that's the way we're trying to, to move forward with that. And so as I talked about, our revenue. And so as I talked about, our revenue and the total meals served has just been incredible. And then 44% of the budget is salaries and benefits. So this, once again, is where our biggest cost is for school nutrition. And the last, we have our SLOSS fund. Exciting and scary with large numbers. So this will be the midterm 24 budget. So in here, state sources and 25, that is the amount that the state provides for the reimbursement of the elementary school. So the 18.6 is how much will be being reimbursed from the state. Local taxes, 2% is conservative. But as you know, I always try to be conservative on SLOSS because it's one of those things that can go up and down. It's kind of leveling off. I do still see it being four and 5% increases every year. But it doesn't hurt us to be conservative when we're building a new school. So that's why I cut it down to 2%. Other local, that is the interest we've earned as we start using the bond money. We, I mean, we've earned over a million dollars in interest over that bond money. So when you guys decided to go ahead and bond when you did, that was a great choice because it allowed us to earn, have this extra million dollars in earnings. So, but that will go down as we start using the money. So that is why I have a decrease in revenue there. So he, obviously, most of it is going to be here in our construction facilities. That is going to be where we're going to be spending most of the money. So the 27.7 and the 7.5 will be the total cost of the construction. We've already started paying some of this. I don't predict they'll get any of the reimbursement from the state. They take a minute. So that's why I just have all of that in for the next year. So most of it's going to be here. We're very conservative where we're going to spend in other areas. But like I said, we've really done a really good job, textbooks, computers. We've gotten on a pretty good cycle. So we know here, and it's not such a large sum, that is, 3 million. We do have some needs at the middle high school. So this is going to be some AC needs. We have a really big issue with our gym AC. And we have a really big issue with fire alarms. So these are all things that are going to help address that. Most of this is furniture and fixtures for the new school. Some of this is to do some renovations at our middle high school. Now that we can focus on kind of getting that upgraded. We have issues in our bathrooms.
And that's the instructional.
Yes, so an instructional has anything that happens in our facility with instruction. So furniture and fixtures, even here repairing the AC in that building, it's an instructional building, so it falls there. So that's what most of that is. And people services, our athletics. It's time to renew, remove and renew the turf. So there are some renovations that also have to be done at the athletic fields. That's a safety issue. So those are things that we've built in to kind of address that. I have been saving because I knew this was coming. So I have been, you know, saving in the back of my mind for SLOSS, for this piece. But a large part of that is to replace the turf.
What's the cost to replace the turf?
I'm sorry?
What is the cost to replace it? I'm just curious.
Anywhere from 500, our estimate so far, up to 750.
Like it costs 250 when we put it in?
I'm sorry?
As I think it would cost us 250 or something like it when we put it in?
Uh, yeah. So they're having to do.
How long does that last, 10 years?
Yeah. So the safety, we have it, I guess, inspected every, you know, and they say, you know, a good year. But if they're saving a year, the last thing we want to do is try to extend the life of that. And then something happens. Yeah.
At least it's only every 10 years.
And you know, they change the technology. It's not even the same type of turf anymore. So, yeah, so. Yeah, they say it's better. And it doesn't get as hot. And there's always a big gap.
It's been fall of 2014.
So 10 years coming up a little.
Yeah, so. So that is kind of a recap. So in the after construction, with still about 3 million dollars in our SLOSS side, which is much better than I was worried as we were discussing this process. And it would be, I think, at all. So that leaves us in a good position. Like I said, we may be utilizing about a million a year for normal annual operations. So this gives us a little bit extra to start saving for our next middle school meeting. So that'll be the longer.
Is SLOSS on the ballot?
We just.
It's not on the ballot this time.
Yes. It was last fall, right?
Yeah.
There's so many.
It's, it's for the county.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's not the E-LAW.
It was two years ago?
Cities and like cities have already figured out what's on the Walton House that you say.
I Googled it, that's the only reason I did. Because that's why I went, went Walton, and that's why I looked it up. But then I was thinking it was T-Slaw. There's so many, I can't.
Yeah. This is just a look at our collections. And as you can see, the blue number is this year, so we have been still trending. This was an anomaly. There was a large tax bill that was received from a company. So that was a one, one time thing. It was a back tax. But anyway, as you can see, our SLOSS collections are still turning up. So I feel pretty comfortable there. So just to recap of next steps. So we're scheduled to have our next two at the, well, at the May 2nd board meeting. You're scheduled to, you have to approve the tentative budget. So I would say between now and then, if any of you would like to meet 101, if any of you have additional questions, you can just get with Carrie. She'll coordinate a time with Dr. Rigorana to get together with you. I will plan to give any updates, maybe in the Friday update or as needed. So you'll stay aware of anything that happens in between now and that tentative budget. So you'll approve the tentative budget. And just so you know, the tentative budget is approved, but you can change before the final. So you're just approved. That is something I have to publish and put out on our website so that the public is a bit aware. And then we have two public meetings. One is on the 16th, the 5:30, and the second is the 23rd, at 11:00. And most of you have been in these. We haven't had any public participation. So it's a hearing. So generally, you open it and it's up for public comment. If there's no one here, they have deep gross. So those are scheduled for those two days. And then the adoption of the budget is scheduled for June 13th at the regular board meeting.
The only question I have is like the funds that we have a lot of for construction. Like I'm assuming it includes like some contingency in case there's any like cost or rooms and things like that.
Oh, absolutely.
So if we come in under budget, do we get to keep the funds from the state? Or do we have like, how does that work?
There's no way we'll be under the 18 million. There's no way.
Well, I mean, like if, like just say that like the final construction budget. So it would be, it would definitely be our funding. We would have to use the state's fund, we could use, is, is it state?
Yes, you have to use that first.
You have to use the state's first.
And we have to get reimbursed for those from them. But there's no way that we'll spend less than the 18.
Yeah, I feel like maybe, but I just wasn't sure like this.
There is contingency in our Carol Daniel budget. But that contingency, I mean, we're, we're at 35. So it's a million dollar contingency. We would have spent the 18 million from the state first.
First.
Yeah. So that million would be our SLOSS.
Like if it was a percentage or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like if we definitely personally got that state money.
Yes, 100% got it.
And because when, like we wouldn't have to spend our money first, I guess, is what I was thinking. If we have to spend state's money first and then we get ours.
We have to spend ours and then reimburse us, but they reimburse us.
Just for what you spent.
Yes. But I will make sure if we spend every, every part, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying allows per year for a new build.
I'm sorry.
How much does the state allow per year? How much do they for new buildings?
So you would think I would do a simple question. Right, really? It is based on a huge complicated formula by district, by student count, by population. I mean, it is.
It's which grade levels.
You earn an entitlement and then they give, and they even give it based on how many classrooms you need and what has to be in that classroom. So you can't say, I need an elementary school, Morgan County needs an elementary school, they give you 25. It's not like that at all. It varies from district to district.
I don't, it used to, you learn so much a year.
You do, you earn entitlement every year, yes. So for us, we earned about.
About, yeah.
1.5 a year there for a while. And so we had accumulated and we were up to about 9 million. But remember, we qualified for advanced funding. So it almost doubled what we earned. Which is why we wanted to, that, because that went away after this year. We would have lost that advanced funding. So that's why it was so important. And that, because that's based on how much money the state has.
Yes, and I figure he's year to year. One of the great things that's just coming out of the legislative session is that we'll start earning money on the classrooms that are occupied by pre-K students. We didn't earn any money on those classrooms. So when the, when the state's creating the calculations for the number of instructional units you need, it's as if those four or five classrooms are empty. And so you only earn money when you're, when you have more than enough students there in the building. So the good news is they made that change. And now those classrooms will start working towards capital outlay. And the timing for that's really good for us.
And the formula is so tricky. That's why you build a school as small as you can because you only earn when you need more room. So you don't ever want to build a school with empty classrooms yet. And I know that's hard. And that's why you'll see some schools open with trailers. Because they want to automatically start earning more money. It's just the way the state funding works. So you have to work around it.
Any other? Nicole, I appreciate the hard work that you've done on this. You've spent many, many hours on it. You and I have spent hours on it together. And it's just hard when it's such a moving target. So we're, the, no one at the state has been able to really explain to us what the implications are for the tax changes that have come through. We will get those. But every attorney that you talk to describes it a little bit differently, so.
Good one, quite a few explain it quite yet, so.
Perfect. And we will have no vote for the fiscal year 25 budget.
Right, no. Thank you. We are really proud that last year, we were identified as an exemplary committee. And as you all remember, for those who are on the board, that there's an exemplary board application process. Two board members need to be selected to participate in that board application process. Last year, those that represented us were LaWanabell and Steve Trantham. Are there any folks that would volunteer to participate on the exemplary board application process?
And what we may have to do.
So Carrie organized that process for us last year. Would you, Carrie, could you talk about what the specific responsibilities were?
The exemplary committee, which is made up of two board members and two community members, will review the self-assessments that each of you complete. So those four people, the two community members and two of you, we will meet. We can do it Zoom or meet in person and you will just review. Now, we populate all of y'all's responses into one sheet so that when the committee gets together, you do not know who chose what. But it's just those four people are reviewing the self-assessment as a whole and kind of giving a response to where the board is. And it's the self-assessment. Like you're basically, the committee's reviewing the self-assessment, but the board's response to the self-assessment.
All right. So we have.
And it doesn't take long. We'd probably meet within an hour, an hour tops, it's all it takes.
Amber has also, she'd be happy to help with that. Thank you, ladies. Last year, we had two community members. One of those was Dr. Betty Ray and the other was Andrew Dykes. Are there any folks that you all would like for us to reach out to, to participate in this? Are there folks that you particularly want us to include?
Lady, can you get your bit?
I was there.
All right. Ben, if y'all are fine, we'll go ahead and we will identify two folks. If you come up with something, someone you'd particularly like for us to include, please let us know. Next, we have the review of the board policy and the board code of ethics. Carrie's going to pull that up. You'll remember that we shared this, we linked this with you in the Friday update so you could have a chance to review. Each year, we're required to review the code of ethics. I appreciate you guys taking the time outside of the meeting to do so. One of the things that I'm required to ask every year is, is anyone aware of any violations that we need to discuss? We'll do it annually. Ms. Mama, would you like more time to review? You're welcome to do that. Okay, all right. So hearing done, we'll move on to the norms and protocols. Carrie gave you a copy here on your desks as well as these. We're also including the Friday update, the norms and protocols. And as you know, exemplary boards adopt, regularly review their norms and protocols and then make revisions as necessary. I appreciate you taking the time to review the norms and protocols when they were shared with you. When you had an opportunity to review them, are there any concerns, additions, or subtractions that you all suggest that we consider? Yes, we reviewed them in January. And considering the conversations that we had, I had a suggestion for a couple of things that we might want to add, but I wanted to see if there were any other items that you all were interested in talking through.
I think we should add on page two, the first sentence, the superintendent should see. Should we add that the board members are promptly updated? And add something in there about as much as legally can be given?
Okay, you were saying page two?
Page three.
Okay, page three. Sorry, page three. That the board members are promptly updated on school-related issues, district positions, and position statements. So are you specifically referring to the, our personnel conversation?
Yes.
Okay. So I had an opportunity to talk with some of our GSBA experts and came up with a couple of suggestions. And I think that one of those might be related to it. So let's kind of look through those and then see if, if any of this language is something you feel comfortable with and where you might want to add to this. So when we did some research, like we indicated, speaking with Mary Jessie, who does HR training for our folks at GSBA, we identified two things that we thought might be helpful. One, superintendent will notify the board when an employee is placed on administrative leave pending an investigation. Once an investigation is complete, the superintendent will notify the board of its completion. No additional information will be shared. Does that match with? Thank you. And then the other, neither the board nor individual board members are expected to intervene directly in school situations involving personnel nor manage the interface between or among staff or provide managerial oversight for any personnel manner. Administrative and operational functions are the work of the superintendent and his or her staff. Any concerns about that? Mr. Jackson, any concerns or suggestions on making that one better?
I'm done.
I'm going to find the suggestions that we thought we might add, not necessarily in the personnel section, but then also a reminder at the bottom. And not necessarily to remind these board members, but to remind future board members that we must remember that acting outside of the government's role may cause a member or the board to lose immunity or other legal protections and/or impact district accreditation, leading to removal and replacement by the governor. Do you have any questions or concerns about that one? And what that's essentially saying is, if we step out of our role as board members, that we're understanding that we're putting ourselves in a place of personal civil liability.
Are you asking that we would add these?
Yes.
To our boards?
I would ask Ms. Douglas to add these. And then. I would ask Ms. Willis to add these, and then we'll have a chance for everyone to review them. And what we'd like to suggest is if you have, if you have an opportunity to look through and you want to make some changes or some suggestions, please let us know, and then Carrie will get a version together that we can look to approve again at the next board meeting. All right. And some protocols, all right. Next, we need to review the May, uh, board agenda. May is the meeting where we continue to have lots of recognitions here at the end of the school year. Um, and one of our highlights is of course recognizing our retirees. So we have three folks who will be retiring at the end of the school year. One is Ms. Jeanette Keely, who has thirty years with the Social Circle City Schools of Blessing and Loving Our Children. Chris Bell, who has spent twenty-nine years here in the Social Circle City Schools. And then Mr. Jimmy Jarrett, who has spent four years in Social Circle with thirty years total of educational experience. Any concerns about, uh, our plans for the May board meeting? We will, we will look forward, of course, to several spring sports recognitions for region chairs and hopefully we'll get close to some state championships in there.
So the only addition we foresee is possibly in addition to amend the norms and protocols?
Correct.
Okay.
If we get to the point where it flushes it out, everybody feels uncomfortable with it, then we can add that here. Again, it's important that we look at them and review them, that the time limit on it isn't as big of an emergency as, as, uh, doing our work with the exemplary committee. Those are, there are deadlines with those. All right, so, um, great, thank you. Carrie has invited Ms. Jennifer Chadham in. Um, we have, we've shared with you guys through, uh, Friday updates and things that we really need to make some changes for transportation. And so Ms. Chadham has worked really closely with our transportation staff members. And then, um, also some folks that are, are helping us out with some, um, some applications that we think can help us to do a better job with this. And so we wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of the rationale behind the changes that we need to make. And Jennifer, and they've, as you know, they've been here for a long, long time.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
I know that you're very excited about this information.
Yes.
So I will get to it. Um, thank you for taking the time to listen to this update. This information was shared in the March twenty-ninth Friday update. And as we continue to seek ways to ensure the safety of our students, I want to provide some additional information and answer any questions that you may have as we make some changes to our transportation procedures that will be in effect next school year. So as you know, we have encountered some transportation safety issues. And these updated processes will not only help us to address those concerns, but also help us to have an accurate account of students who need bus transportation. As always, our first priority is ensuring student safety. In order to accomplish that, we need to have a precise student information, excuse me, precise student information and records so that we can accurately plan our bus routes and our bus stops. Next, we must use those approved routes and stops to safely transport children to and from school each day. Out-of-district students, Tuition, and Newton County are not eligible to participate in morning and afternoon bus routes. So implementing these changes will allow us to identify when people have made residency changes more efficiently. So I do want to take a moment and share with you something that we do in this district that is really pretty special. So, um, before every break, we, or I send out an email to our central office staff asking for volunteers to ride home on the bus. And so this really supports our drivers and provides some additional supervision on the days when kids might be a little extra excited. And so on one of my first rides, I noticed a few things. One, our driver didn't have an accurate list of who was riding the bus. Two, the driver did not have an accurate list of who was getting off at each stop. And three, there was no easy way to identify who should be getting off at each stop and how many. So our bus drivers really need to know each student that should be on their bus every day, as well as know the bus stop that has been approved by our transportation department. So currently, we have been wonderfully accommodating to our families. Parents often send in notes requesting that their child rides home on a different bus for a multitude of reasons. And the request often includes a desired drop-off address. And we have accommodated those requests, yet they aren't regular bus stops, and this poses a potential problem in terms of safety. Our drivers may not be aware of the address location, and they may not even be able to get their bus down the desired street. So just to give you a couple of examples of some of the things our sweet bus drivers have been doing, um, we often have, well, recently we had physicals taking place and we had a slew of parents who requested that their children go home, or excuse me, go to the high school rather than their regular bus route to get home, um, and we accommodated that. Another story involves a brand-new student, um, whose parent gave us the desired bus stop before it got approved by transportation, and the child got on the bus and the bus driver did not know where that bus stop was. And as they were traveling down the road, the bus couldn't get down the street where the parent wanted the child to be dropped off. So every time we change a child's transportation, it gives us a potential to make an error. So in order to ensure that we've got this accurate account and that we are making sure our, every child is safe and delivered where they're supposed to be delivered, we want to make these changes. So one, we've got an updated process to ensure that we have accurate information in our infinite, infinite campus student information system. We are going to be using routing software that will provide an accurate list of routes, bus stops, and students who are assigned to those bus routes and bus stops. Bus passes for a student to ride a bus other than that which he or she is assigned must be approved by our transportation department. And we are requesting that transportation changes be reserved for emergencies. As I mentioned, anytime we make a change, there's a potential for us to make an error. Each bus rider is expected to ride the bus assigned and to be picked up and dropped off at the assigned bus stop. Again, bus stops can only be approved by the transportation department. Parents will not be able to request that students be dropped off at unapproved stops. Anytime a student's transportation is changed, it will, uh, the school will need to be notified in writing. And changes that come in after the school day has begun, we will require, um, the use of the Google form, which we are using in a couple of, uh, locations right now. These changes will require a proof of identification, and they have to come in prior to the last two hours of the school day. And that is so we can ensure that the changes get to the student and we appropriately communicate, so we don't have chaos at the end of the school day. And then finally, um, with any new enrollees, our transportation department is requesting up to three days to assign a new bus route. The hope is that it doesn't take that long, but anytime we add a new student to a bus, it could potentially change the entire route and therefore the times that the other children are being picked up and dropped off, and we need time to make sure we plan for that and communicate that with all of our students. So we believe that these processes are going to help us ensure the safety of all of our students and provide an accurate account of our ridership. They will also help us as we move into our new school building and have almost a thousand students who are arriving and dismissing from one location. Now, of course, we are going to work to accommodate our families as much as we can when the need arises, and we will have an appeals process should a family need to utilize that. We plan to share, um, this information with our families beginning in May so that they will have ample opportunity to adjust and to plan for the coming year and to make adjustments accordingly. So that is all the information I have for you at this time. I stand ready to answer any questions if you have them.
How many of our students are current on bus drivers?
So right.
Riders, I'm sorry.
We were prepared for a lot of chaos in there.
Yes.
He was driving the bus.
We have about seven hundred and fifty currently who ride the bus.
Who's gonna do all the, uh, software updating? Who's gonna, who's gonna keep up with all that?
So we have been working on that. I've been working closely, um, with Mr. Morgan and Ms. Chastain and then the company representative. And so we have been able to get finally, as of yesterday, to the place where we've got an accurate count in the system, and we're very pleased about that. And so we'll be working very closely together to make sure that that stays updated.
Does it change us every day?
Yes, so, so one of the processes we do have in place is when we do get a new student or a student who withdraws, the registrar is supposed to notify the transportation department in writing so that they can go ahead and update the bus routes accordingly.
So does the bus route software, does it have something where like the parents can track where the bus is kind of thing?
So we haven't gotten into that part. I believe that it can eventually, but we are still kind of in the beginning stages of getting the information where we need it to be.
How many buses do we currently operate?
Currently, we have fifteen.
Regular routes.
Regular routes, yes, ma'am.
Is there any kind of notification sent out if the, say the bus? Some note there was an instance, bus came like five minutes later, or maybe it was five minutes earlier. The parent got there at no more, no more time.
Right.
And they waited, but the bus had already came, and she said that she never did get a notification on that.
So that sort of throws her off, well, now she gotta take the child to school, she gonna be late for work, which, you know, it seems like, well, it was just five minutes early, but
most of the time, those buses are pretty accurate on what time they get there. She says she never received any kind of notification that the bus was coming five minutes earlier.
Thank you for that question. So yes, ideally, this software that we are implementing and conju-, and working with Infinite Campus will allow us to send alerts to parents when we have known issues like that, and it will give us a way to better communicate based on a student's bus route.
Cause you're saying right now the district didn't have a good grasp on like if they were on the Apple bus or if they were on the cap, I don't know what the names of the buses are, but so that, that's what, so that would solve that is if they, if they knew that Rico's son was on the Apple bus and there was an issue with an Apple bus, then y'all could go into Infinite Campus and send it that way. Is that what we're hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And while we have that information, we do know who's on each bus, getting to that information, communicating it quickly has been a challenge for us.
Makes sense.
Now, what were you saying? I say if, I guess a student was going, spending a night with someone on the weekend and riding a bus and they just, let me just get on the bus and then just get off at that stop, is there?
Yes, sir. So we need to have that approved by the transportation department, because what has happened is we could potentially accommodate that kind of, um, request, but it would have to be to an approved stop that we already have. And ideally, we would only do that in cases of an emergency, which that could be one, because you might need to have your child spend the night somewhere else. Um, but we want to make sure that we're, we're keeping it to already assigned bus stops. What we're finding sometimes is we're getting notes like, take my child here, take my child there, and they're not something that we already have approved. And then also, we have to be mindful of the number of students that we already have on a bus. So when you add additional kids, there might potentially not be a seat available.
Any questions about that one? We know that that's something that our families are going to be really passionate about and want to have this conversation with you early, because we've really liked to start speaking with families about it in May, so that they can get prepared that they may need to make some changes, um, in the way that the buses are run. We, um, hear that there are out-of-district families that are dropping children off at other people's houses, and then that out-of-district children will ride from that person's house. And those things just make it really difficult for us to know how many kids are really on each bus and how many spaces we have. You can imagine that parents get really frustrated when their child doesn't have a seat on a bus, because there are kids who weren't eligible for transportation and they're showing up and sitting on the bus and that that causes issues. So we're trying to resolve that, um, but we want to make sure that we're communicating with parents truly, clearly about it. And, um, we anticipate that you will have lots of communication with families about it, especially if we're not able to go ahead and communicate ahead of time for them to go make arrangements.
The change from our is I'm all like.
That's right. That's right. Ms. Chadham, did you have anything else you wanted to share with us about this?
No, but thank you for, um, listening for your questions. Ultimately, um, again, we want to make sure, make sure the safety of our children and that we get them home every day where they need to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, now we will move on to new business. Um, we have an action item for the board to consider. Um, we have an action item to approve personal recommendations from our superintendent. For classified staff, we have the following recommendation for consideration. Here's to more from media paraprofessional for the middle high school. Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation from our superintendent? Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. Also, for classified staff, we have the following resignation for consideration. Carly Dunn as cafeteria assistant manager at the high school. Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation from our superintendent?
So no.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to adjourn our work session?
So would.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Please be drawn. Thank you.